The afternoon session of the Special Finance Committee meetings will begin now. It will be divided into three sessions from two P M to five, uh, six oh five P M. The purpose of the Special F C meetings is to scrutinize the draft estimates proposed by the government in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, to make sure that it will not exceed the amount needed for implementing the policies. May I remind members that all questions must directly be related to the draft estimates? And if you want to follow up on the written replies, please quote the reply serial number such as H A B zero zero one. If members do not have the opportunity to follow up on the written replies at the meeting, you can put forward the written supplementary questions and please do so before the end of today and submit them to the secretariat. I would determine the speaking time limit depending on the number of members wishing to speak. May I welcome the Secretary for Home Affairs to our meeting and together with his team. This is about home affairs and please press the request to speak button if you wish to do so. May I now invite Secretary to give some opening remarks? Thank you, Mister Chairman. I'd like to brief members about the key areas of our work on home affairs in twenty twenty, twenty one. Arts and culture, since its inception in twenty sixteen, the Art Development Matching Grant Scheme has been well received by different arts groups. It has also helped foster a culture of private donations to the arts and cultural sector. To ensure the sustainability of the A D M G S and to encourage arts groups to seek non-government resources and support in a more proactive manner, the government will inject an additional nine hundred million dollars into the scheme. The West Kowloon Cultural District has formally entered its operational phase. The Seashore Centre, the Art Park and Free Space, among others, have been commissioned last year. Other arts and cultural facilities in the district will also be completed in the next few years. To continue its support for district councils to promote arts and cultural activities at the district level, the government will, starting from twenty twenty to twenty one, regularize the additional dedicated allocation of twenty point eight million dollars for the promotion of arts and cultural activities under the Community Involvement Programs. In this connection, the total annual amount of funding for C I programs will be maintained at four hundred and sixty one point six million dollars. On sports, we'll continue to support Hong Kong athletes to prepare for the Tokyo Olympic and Paralympic Games. Despite the postponement of the Tokyo Olympic and Paralympic Games, we will continue to give full our full support for Hong Kong athletes to achieve outstanding results at the games. That's at the end of March this year. Hong Kong athletes have qualified for thirty and seventeen events in the Tokyo Olympic and Paralympic Games respectively. The Hong Kong Sports Institute, H K S I, has implemented anti-pandemic measures to help safeguard the health of our athletes and will make flexible arrangements to adjust training programs and competition plans in order to help our athletes continue with their intensive preparation. Enhanced funding support to the Sports Federation and Olympic Committee of Hong Kong, China, S F N O C, and National Sports Associations, N S As. To further promote the development of sports in Hong Kong, we will substantially increase the annual subvention provided for them, progressively from the existing level of about three hundred million dollars to over five hundred million dollars. The additional subvention will be used to enhance the promotion of sports for all and community, community participation in sports, setting up the training for youth in squads, provide more opportunities for athletes to participate in overseas competitions and improve the manpower and governance of N S As. Special measures in response to social incidents and the epidemic. Last year, some major sports events were canceled as a result of social incidents. We'll provide a special direct grant of up to two million dollars to each M mark event affected. We're also actively considering providing appropriate support to those M mark defense affected by the epidemic. New facility building project of the H K S I. We'll continue to take forward a new facilities building project and commence its pre-construction activities A S A P to provide local athletes with world-class training and support facilities. About transformation of public play spaces, the government plans to transform more than one hundred and seventy public play spaces managed by the L C S D across the territory over the next five years in order to provide innovative, challenging and interesting play spaces. The total estimated expenditure for the entire project is about six hundred and eighty six million dollars. On youth development, around one hundred million dollars under the Youth Development Fund will be allocated to provide subsidies to nearly two hundred young entrepreneurs and to render startup support and incubation services to about four thousand young people. Besides, in order to provide more opportunities for young people to participate in policy discussions, the government has regularized the member self-recommendation scheme for the youth. So far, more than two hundred and fifty posts are held by young people who have been appointed to advisory and statutory bodies directly or indirectly through self-recommendation. The proportion of appointed youth members in A S Ps has increased from seven point eight percent in twenty seventeen to eleven point six percent at present, gradually approaching the target of fifteen percent within the current term government. District-led action scheme. The annual recurrent provision for district-led action scheme will be increased from sixty three million dollars to eighty million dollars from twenty twenty, twenty one onwards to further address long-standing problems and capitalize on opportunities in districts. On building management, in twenty twenty, twenty one, we will regularize the Building Management Professional Advisory Service Scheme to strengthen our support for owners of three new buildings and encourage them to form owners' corporations. My colleagues and I are happy to answer questions from members. Thank you. We have fifteen members who have pressed the buttons waiting to speak. So each member will be given four minutes. This will more or less use up the time for this session. Let me read out the names, Mister Long Yuchong, Doctor Helena Wong, Mister Vincent Chang, Mister Kenneth Lau, Mister Yu Si Wen, Mister Michael Look, Mister Ma Feng Kwok, Mister Roy Kwong, Mister Wu Chi Wei, Mister Tony Che, Mister Horst Chang, Mister Kwak Wai Kung, Mister Ray Chan, Mister Ip Kin Yun and Doctor Loy Kwok. Let's start with Mister Long Yuchong. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Well, under the current epidemic, many catering establishments have folded up or that they would only provide takeaway service. For many establishments, they will be closed after six P M. On the twenty fifth of March, McDonald's, the fast food chain, also announced that they would see, uh, stop the twenty-four hour service. That means in the evening, the catering area will not be opened. The biggest problem is with street sleepers. As we know, these street sleepers tend to stay overnight in these fast food restaurants. Now they are barred to entry. So they become really homeless at night without a roof over their head. And some facility, some, um, sport centers managed by the government are closed as well and they have nowhere to shower. So what can the government do to help the homeless street sleepers? During inclement weathers, they suffer the most as they lack a roof over their head at night. Will there be a place for them to stay? Or will you make use of community centers and community halls? With proper isolation facilities, they can have a place to sojourn and they can be provided with showering facilities. Secretary, Mister Lau. Thank you, Chairman. Uh, thank you, Member, for the question. We also noticed this issue. The Social Welfare Department at night does provide assistance to these street sleepers. Now, for the two suggestions made by the member, we knock them, but we don't think it is feasible. First, if we are to open the L C S D venues for them to shower, according to expert advice, these public shower facilities carry high risks. At the early stage of the epidemic, we did try to, um, open the, uh, L C S D venues, albeit jogging tracks, not shower facilities because they carry high risk. We need to be very careful. Next, about community centers. Because of the epidemic and exactly because we need to fight the epidemic, we have closed the centers. If we are to allow dozens to gather in these centers without independent toilet facilities, I don't think it will run in line with our anti-pandemic efforts. I hope that synergy will be created and we can put our heads together to try to solve the issue. But there are no ways to help them, no ways to help the, the street sleepers. And I'm not suggesting, uh, crowding several hundred people in a particular center. You can impose restrictions to ensure it is safe. And also shower facilities, you can also limit the number of users at a time as part of the prevention, um, of infectious disease measure. The Home Affairs Bureau is tasked to handle the street sleeping problem. But now you're only sitting on your hands. I don't think you're being fair to them. Secretary. Chairman, I need to clarify first of all that the Policy Bureau does not carry a policy objective of handling street sleepers. Now, some departments have been providing assistance to them and we do have a synergy with them by providing more assistance. Doctor Helena Wong. Chairman.
About Chairman's speaking notes, he referred to district administration. We understand that for district councils, after this year's election, we have seen a lot of new faces. We have some fresh faces from the non-pro-establishment camp or those independent candidates winning the election. And I have been receiving complaints from district councillors about support services given to district councillors. For example, district officers refuse to attend district council meetings or at least part of the meetings. Some complaints relate to discussions by the district councils on police, uh, police matters or complaints launched by the public against the police. And after setting up such working groups, the district officers refuse to acknowledge the existence of these groups. So is the government being politically neutral? Regardless of the political background of the district councillors returned, do you adopt the same standard or the same yardstick? Because according to the complaints I receive, it seems that the government is being difficult with them. About the elected district councillors, do you have this trump card to, um, refuse some of their entitled rights? But before I allow the secretary to answer, I would urge members to quote the reply serial number as much as you can. I just quoted, it's from the speaking notes. Secretary, thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Doctor Wong, for the questions. As you understand, under district administration, the structure of the district councils according to the basic law and the applicable laws and regulations that the district councils is an advisory structure. About livelihood-related incidents, we seek to provide a platform for communication between the public and the government in order to resolve district issues. Regarding your suggestion about the operation of certain groups, they are of course at liberty to operate any group. However, it should not go beyond the terms of reference or the statutory status. If it goes beyond that, then frankly, the secretariat of district office will not be able to provide support to these groups unlawfully formed. Secretary. I understand that the D C is an advisory structure. They may have as to a certain degree substantive power over district minor works projects, et cetera. But this is after all related to people's livelihood. They have complaints against the police on police brutality. These are complaints received by district councillors. That is why they need to set up this group. And are you suggesting that the district councillors should not fulfill their duty as the, um, representatives of the people to express their views to the government? Well, we just act in accordance with the law. In relation to communication between the police and district councillors at the District Fight Crime Committees, we have this regular mechanism. But in terms of setting up a body with investigating, uh, uh, power, this is beyond the terms of reference. This is why we cannot give support.
Next, Mister Vincent Chang. Um, I have been a district council for quite some years. I think it is important to stick to the district council sending orders, orders. And I have a question about, um, reply serial number sixty-three, and this has to do with the district councils. District councils should deal with district matters and they have an important advisory role. They should be serving the public regardless of political stance or background. But these days, more and more district council members have said clearly that they would not serve a particular or certain groups of the public due to differences in political views. Some, this, a, a district councillor put up a notice on his, um, district council, uh, councillor office that, um, they would not welcome blue ribbons and dogs. And, um, this is a petition signed by many members of the public. These district councillors have breached the regulations and I think, um, they, uh, suspected of committing misconduct in public office. In the Home Affairs Department's reply, um, they indicated that the district council chairman should deal with the matter. Some district councillors wrote to the relevant district council chairman, but the chairman indicated that, uh, the matter would not be dealt with since there is no urgency. I think, um, this is a case of harboring. Now, I have a very specific question. How can the government monitor and deal with these district councillors who breach the regulations? They are paid by public money. They can do, they can choose to do or not do, um, what they want. So, um, how can they be dealt with? And Mister Horst Chang told me that, um, with the coming Dragon Boat races, um, the fund, the relevant funding applications have all been turned down. So what was the reason? Um, was the decision politically motivated or due to differences in political views? If that's the case, what is the role of the district council? Mister Chang raised three questions with regards to the conduct and behavior of district council members. If there are any doubts from the public or fellow district councillors, the conduct of district, um, councillors should be discussed at district councils. After the H A D received the complaints, the district council chairman was notified. If the, um, district, if a district councillor would only serve, um, part of the public, this is not acceptable. If this is the case, um, when they apply for funds in the future, um, this would be something we consider. So we have reminded the district councillors that they cannot only serve, um, part of the public. If the district councillors um, would, um, use public money to serve the public, they must open their doors to everyone. The funds of the district council are decided by the district councils themselves. For certain activities, for example, the Dragon Boat races, of course, we hope that the district councils will continue to support these traditional activities which have been organized for a very long time and, um, these activities are not politically charged. Um, however, if the funds could not be approved, um, the H A D will continue to support the activities as a confession. Mister Kent Lau, H A B zero nine eight, about, um, public relations beyond Hong Kong. Since June last year, the social incidents have, um, deeply affected the image of Hong Kong and, um, there are concerns that as a financial hub, can Hong Kong still maintain its stability under the rule of law? Hong Kong's economy is being hit by the social unrest as well as epidemic. The government should be more proactive in regaining the trust of investors. As the government formulates different policies, they should also look at the fake news and rumors on social media and mix with response. Um, the foreigners might not grasp the real situation and as such, the government should be more proactive in dispelling such rumors in the future or else, um, such rumors would further affect Hong Kong's reputation. For the two hundred and twenty-six point six million dollar estimate, it includes, um, the personal emoluments and this establishment of seventy-two staff members cover different areas. Can you offer a clearer breakdown of the relevant costs? Director of Information Services, thank you.
In our reply, we noted that in the past nine or ten months, apart from the anti-extradition law amendment bill movement and epidemic, um, these have, um, taken a toll on Hong Kong's reputation as a financial and investment hub. So in the coming year, we have allocated a budget of more than seventy million dollars in several areas of work. Um, we are working with international media outlets for promotion and there will be more online promotions and advertisements as well as social media. We are still drawing up the relevant plans, but, um, this is the direction we are heading towards. Mister Lau, any follow-up?
Reply serial number H A B one one six for the trees damaged in the aftermath of Typhoon Mankut. After Mankut hit Hong Kong, twelve point three thousand trees were replanted and the average replanting cost was about, um, three thousand three hundred. For Wan Chai, the cost is relatively high. The average replanting cost is about five thousand dollar per tree for two hundred and thirty-nine trees. So, um, does the difference in costs have anything to do with the location and species of trees?
Mister Lau was indeed right. Due to the different geographical, um, conditions, the situation would be different. In more congested areas, replanting might be more challenging and that would lead to higher replanting costs. And this also has to do with the species of trees. Next, Mister Yu Si Wen.
Thank you. Reply serial number zero eight nine about unlicensed guesthouses. On the eleventh of July, twenty eighteen, the government, um, tabled the hotel and guesthouse accommodation bill. But since, um, the House Committee Chairman is yet to be elected, this bill could not be scrutinized and passed at the last call meeting. Before the, um, bill comes into effect, the government would enhance enforcement as well as, um, evidence collection. In other words, um, extra manpower would be allocated to crack down on these unlicensed guesthouses. After the bill is passed, can the Home Affairs Department, um, streamline the relevant work and do a better job in law enforcement? As for the nuisance caused to residents, um, would the situation improve? The second question is about reply number H A B zero six nine about the, um, M mark events. Given the current epidemic, I believe that many, um, activities or events, um, could not be held till August. There would be a two million dollar subsidy on the relevant events. So can the event organizers apply indirect? So long as the events are affected? Or would the subvention be offered if the, um, event is successfully held? For the first question, I would, um, invite the Director of Home Affairs and Second Commissioner for Sports. Thank you. If the bill can be passed soon, then, um, this can ease our enforcement work. In the past, some, the, the relevant, um, persons must, must be caught red-handed and the difficulty lies in the fact that some, um, premises are unregulated and, um, the, uh, tenants would, uh, simply use passcodes to come in. And the, in, in the future, the responsibility would lie on the tenants, et cetera, and enforcement officers can apply for warrants and these would help enforcement efforts. Could, um, the manpower requirements be streamlined? In the initial period, after the bill is passed, we would maintain the same manpower position in order to smoothly, um, enforce the amended ordinance. The second question, as for the M mark events, the major sports events from January to June, um, have either been postponed or called off. For the second half of the year, um, it would depend on the development of the epidemic. The two million dollars would apply, um, to the canceled or postponed events. Since the preparation of these events, um, would incur certain costs such as venue costs, so, um, the idea is to provide a subsidy. If the M mark events could be held, we would provide, um, subventions under the current system. Mister Michael Look, please.
Chairman, in recent years, um, R T H K's programs have been much criticized. Some were biased, um, others were boring. Well, this is not a criticism of the, of the R T H K, but I have an idea for the R T H K. And this is, um, at H A B zero three nine. Can the government consider acquiring the broadcasting rights to the Tokyo twenty twenty Olympic Games? Um, the Tokyo Games will be postponed for a year. And, um, given the gloomy market, the, um, broadcasting rights might be cheaper than usual. The Olympic spirit is, um, higher, faster, stronger. This would, um, bring positive vibes to the community. A lot of people might not be able to, um, afford the fees to subscribe to pay TV. But a lot of people would like to enjoy the games and, um, cheer for the national team or Hong Kong team. Can the secretary consider this so that more people can enjoy the Olympic Games? And the Olympic charter says, um, the games should be enjoyed by more people in the world. Is this possible? We have heard such calls. But in the past, some broadcasting rights were decided, um, by the commercial market. As far as I know, some TV stations are still in negotiations over the rights. The games have been postponed for a year, so there's still another year of time. We will keep tabs on the situation and if necessary, we would extend support. The government said that in the past four years, um, they never intervene in such matters. In the twenty twelve London Games, um, the rights were acquired by a pay TV station, but with government can, with government intervention, some um, sessions could be broadcast at a free TV station. So this is certainly possible if the government is willing. Now, I'd like to talk about, um, local sport development and this is another idea for the R T H K to, um, enrich their programs. More local sport programs should be shown. For instance, some various, um, ball, ball games, the, um, basketball, um, A League or the Hong Kong
A League or the Hong Kong Premier League. Um, the R T H K might be on a very tight um budget, one way or another. So can the government shoulder part of the production fees? And the programs can be um broadcast on R T H K. For the Hong Kong Premier League, um their operating position um has been mediocre in recent years and they had a very difficult time looking for sponsors. If the games can be broadcast at an official station, um they might find it easier to secure a sponsor. At least um the important games could be broadcast. Mr. Yang, please.
Chairman, thank you, Mr. Lu, for his questions about the broadcasting of football games for the Hong Kong Premier League. Another broadcasting broadcaster is responsible. As I understand, the Hong Kong Football Association and the relevant um association are happy with the arrangement. As for major games in Hong Kong, uh we do have TV stations broadcasting the games. And the Lunar New Year Cup last year was also broadcast by R T H K. We do keep in view other major games. Next, Dr. Ma Feng Kwok. I have a number of questions. The first one is O four O. I asked about the funding given to Hong Kong Arts Development Council this year. It's only less than one percent higher than the revised estimate last year. According to the government's reply, the zero point six percent increase would help them employ additional staff to process applications. I don't quite understand that. Is it because the Hong Kong A D C failed to exhaust the previous subventions? Uh thereby, the little increase in the revised estimates. And next question, O five two, seventy two seventy-two million dollars were were set aside for exchange and also another uh sum set aside for the exchange in G B A. Now, with the current epidemic, we uh things are not optimistic. And this trend will continue in the second quarter with the worsening of the pandemic around the world. So in other words, the sum will not be used up and the industry is bearing the brunt. Well, under the Anti-Epidemic Fund launched recently, uh subsidies have been dispersed by the government to help the industry tide over the difficulty. My point is whether there is any residual funding available which can be reallocated for support measures for the industry. My third question relates to the annual sport uh district's sports intervention scheme. It was approved a year ago. Why hasn't it commenced? And I want to know about the delay. But first, about Hong Kong A D C, next cultural exchange, and then district sports intervention. For the Hong Kong A D C, over the past few years, we have been increasing resources. I would defer to my colleague to take your question later. As for additional resources, I thank Mr. Ma Feng Kwok for reminding us of the difficulties faced by art groups, especially during the current epidemic. We are striving for more resources under the anti-epidemic fund. In fact, there is a subsidy scheme available for art groups as well as freelance artists. They're all covered. And we're also looking into new items that can be launched at the next round of the fund. About district sports development, the commissioner can respond to that. Yes, Mr. Yang. About district sport subsidy scheme, after approving the funding last year together with other stakeholders and district organizations, we discussed and ironed out details. We are approaching the final stage of our discussion. I believe it will be launched very soon. Hong Kong A D C, uh Mrs. Zhang, would you like to respond? The subvention for Hong Kong A D C increased by thirty-three thirty-five percent, some ten percent per year. As for planned subvention and annual subvention, the amount increased from thirty-six million to forty million. Together with other projects and subsidy available for exchange programs, we have allocated more than one hundred million dollars for art groups uh for A D C this year. So in fact, this is a substantial increase. Next, Mr. Roy Kwong.
I have two questions. First, H A B zero one eight about anti-epidemic effort. There was a subsistence allowance, so to speak, to be dispersed to frontline cleaners. It's only one thousand dollars. The government is a miser. I want to know whether the government will increase the amount? Secretary.
The Home Affairs Department can report on the progress. The application period is still open. The situation changes every week. Basically, we provide support to residential buildings and cleaners working there, as well as security guards. We provide um hard work um or hardship allowance. But they are, they continue to be on the door. They are hired by property management companies. So they will receive an allowance of one thousand dollars a month for four consecutive months. That's support from us, and then director can supplement on the progress. Director.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, member, for the question. After rolling out the hardship allowance, we received over three thousand applications. Six hundred, over six hundred of them have been approved, uh totaling seventeen million dollars, benefiting more than four thousand people. For major property management companies, they may hire thousands, even ten uh ten thousand uh staff members, and they have not uh submitted the application form. Deadline is the end of this week. And I believe by the time they submit their forms, because they manage a large number of housing estates, we will be making much quicker progress. And anyhow, we are working with the um state agency authori- um or the property management authority in vetting the approved uh the applications. I still think the amount is too small. Next question about zero eight three. About key signature projects. Earlier, in Wan Chai and Kun Tong District Councils, they have different items under the signature project scheme, such as the fountain in Morton Terrace. In twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, the estimates were respectively seventy million and eight million. And the final revised estimate stood at fifty-eight point seven and twenty-nine million dollars. The district councils, however, had passed a resolution to call these two projects to a halt, which will burn a hole in the pocket of the government. So five fifty-eight point seven million and twenty-nine million dollars are these approved funds. If we want to call a halt to these projects at this point, if you have respect for district councils, uh how much money are we talking about? These two projects under the signature project schemes are proposed by district councils originally with the support of district councils. They've gone through the detailed design stage. Proposals have also been submitted to the legis legislative council. Enforcement had been sought from the Public Works Committee and the Finance Committee. We're in the stage of tendering and construction. The point is, the district councils passed resolutions because in due course, you will be visiting district councils. You'll need to face the district councillors. Now that district councils have passed a motion to call a halt to these projects, what will be your response? Well, the procedure is very important. Um, if we have gone through the procedures, it is necessary to carry on. We'll continue to communicate with district councillors and the relevant departments. Next, Mr. Wu Shui Wei.
Chairman, I'd like to follow up on Mr. Roy Kwong's question on signature project scheme. I understand according to you that uh construction is underway. The contract has been awarded. But then, we can have different V O's. It's really common to have variations to the contract. The biggest restraint uh constraint facing the district councils is that you cannot change the construction uh cost. You need to show respect to district councils and allow them to exercise autonomy. But instead, you are telling us that you need to go ahead anyway since approval has been sought. But this is not a good way to handle your relationship with district councils. So my question is this. In fact, you could introduce V O's to the agreement so that the project can be completed within budget, whilst at the same time you can discuss with the district councils concerned and mutually agree on some on the project. Because this project is not initiated by the government but by district councils. Now, if now the district councils have a different view on the matter, should we continue to get stuck like this? It's totally unreasonable. So my question is this. Secretary. Since Kun Tong and Wan Chai District Councils have uh such repercussions over the signature project scheme, will you direct the district office to negotiate again with the district councils? So that you would accept the V O's without going over the budget ceiling? Secretary, thank you for understanding the procedures. Just tell me whether V O is possible. Well, on this item, on this particular matter, using this platform, Mr. Wu Shui Wei, I have um discussed with you a number of times. I remember on one occasion, you made some suggestions and we immediately made some adjustments. I this is still fresh in my mind. We have a new term of district council. I'm asking whether V O is possible. We follow the reasonable and lawful procedure. A simple question is V O possible? We're at this stage when construction is in progress. At the district level, the district officer will suspend the works. We can use variation of order by means of V O. We can put works to a halt and then discuss with the district officer and then revise the um suitable ways of carrying out the works. Well, I have answered many times that we're not going to suspend the works. That means the answer is no? We go, we've gone through reason um reasonable and lawful procedures. We need to go ahead. Just one simple question for public works. Is it true that um you never use V O's variation orders? Please allow me to to answer, because the secretary is wasting my time. He is repeating himself. I asked a very simple question whether V O is possible. We asked the question three times. He answered you three times. No, he failed to answer me. You may not be happy with his answer, but he answered you. Ms. Lau, would you like to respond?
I'm asking whether V O is impossible after all. We'll continue to discuss with members at the district level. I have another question, Chairman. Just now, Dr. Helena Wong asked about district councils. Um, section sixty-one of cap five four seven provides that as long as this is related to public service and community affairs, the district councils can discuss the can discuss these matters. So regarding enforcement work of the police or police brutality, uh please uh help switch on Mr. Wu's mic, allow him to finish. I think we've heard him. Any response?
Well, as I said, the in the uh group with investigative power goes beyond the terms of reference of the D C.
Mr. Tony Chair, I'd like to follow up on some questions. Uh, the first is H A B O eight seven, a question from me about the Building Management Professional Advisory Service Scheme. According to the reply, it has been implemented since twenty eleven. Now I seek clarification. Allegedly, this will be regularized within this year. So my question is that while you regularize the scheme this year, have you set aside funding for the matter? Because this is an ongoing scheme, even before it is regularized. Have you reserved funding for regularization of the scheme? Because you didn't mention it in your reply. So that's the first question I'd like to follow up on.
My second question is about reply number H A B one four one. This is about the um list of one hundred and seventy public play spaces. In the reply, the secretary indicated for conversion works of suitable public spaces, um they would explore whether a contest can be arranged for young people to foster their creativity, and I appreciate that. Since um there are one hundred and seventy such projects to take place over five years, in the first year, um there will be seventeen projects or ten percent. When the epidemic eases, um there is a lot of catch-up to do on the remaining works. Is it um possible to enhance resources so that more projects can be completed? And that would encourage greater participation. These are my two questions. Ms. Chair, please. Thank you. Since twenty eleven, the Building Management Professional Advisory Service Scheme has come to the third cohort. Every time we um come up with a new phase of the scheme, um we would apply for funding. The average annual expenditure is about twenty million dollars. For the second and third cohorts, um the expenditure was fifty-eight million and forty million dollars respectively. And the funds would be um would become part of the regular funds of the Home Affairs Department upon approval. As for our plans to convert public play spaces, in the next five years, we hope to convert at least one hundred and seventy public play spaces depending on resources. If we can achieve cost savings, then we can do even more. But our target is one hundred and seventy public play spaces. And twenty of them would be larger playgrounds of areas above four hundred square meters. I'd like to ask about reply zero zero two about youth hostels. The scheme was introduced in twenty eleven to twelve, and so far only one hostel had been completed. So have you encountered um, have you identified any problems? It has been eight years. How are you going to overcome the challenges? There are a number of challenges. One is the availability availability of sites. We have no sites and we must work with NGOs. As for the conversion of sites, then um applications must be launched and procedures must be passed. We hope to speed up the process after we familiarize ourselves. In the coming um projects, we need to go through the same procedures. Next, Mr. Regent.
H A B zero nine one about the Information Services Department. I'd like to ask about the um government's APIs. This falls under program for civic responsibility. The twenty nineteen to twenty revised estimate is seven percent up from the original estimate. In twenty twenty to twenty-one, the increase is six is eighteen percent. Compared with the twenty nineteen original estimates, um the increase is twenty-one point three percent. I'd like the government to explain why there's such a substantial increase. In the reply zero nine one, I asked about the production cost of um some government APIs. And the most talked about video um was a the three-minute video on treasure Hong Kong, our home.
most talked about video was a, the three-minute video on treasure Hong Kong, our home. The production cost was north of nine hundred thousand dollars, but was it worth? Well, the, um, they are actually serving the Hong Kong public. So how can we assess the value for money on the government APIs? Are they cost-effective? Some people call the production cost excessive, some say the costs are very low. I, I think there's a, a wide variance. How are you going to assess the situation or what? First of all, what are your objectives? For instance, um, what do you hope to achieve with the videos on treasure Hong Kong, our home? Then you are going to gauge whether you are achieving your goals. Would it be based on the number of views, number of likes or dislikes? I hope you would educate us on how we can, um, gauge the production fee levels. Mr. Chair. Under program for civic responsibility, there's an eighteen percent increase in the twenty twenty to twenty-one revised estimates. Like Mr. Chan said, um, compared with the original estimates, um, there's an increase of twenty-one point three percent. But if we look at the actual sum, the increase is only about ten million dollars. Like I said in reply to Mr. Ken Lau, in light of the social, um, events as well as epidemic, Hong Kong's reputation has taken a hit apart from overseas promotion. We feel that more should be done, um, locally in terms of promotion. And we want to urge everyone to treasure Hong Kong, our home. Mr. Chan's second question was about the Chief Executives API. When we produce TV, TV videos and other APIs, we comply fully with the government's procurement regulations. When we look at the actual expenses, the three-minute clip of the chief executive was some nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars for other thirty-second or sixty-second clips. The production fees, um, was about four hundred thousand dollars each. So everything was done openly in line with the govern, with the government's procurement regulations. So those were market levels. Would you, um, offer, um, a cap on budget? And people would submit tenders or would you, um, allow tenders to name their prices? Thank you. Our normal practice is to lay down our objectives for the videos as well as the approximate lengths before we open, um, our tender exercise. We would assess whether the content and price match our needs before we decide on the company. Apologies, the speaker is not speaking into the microphone. Can you offer a more direct reply, please? Like I said, um, normally we would lay out our objectives. Um, we might not necessarily set a cap on the fee. Mr. Yip Kin Yun. HAB zero zero one, which was a question asked by Mr. Riechan. I would like to follow up on that. Um, this is about, um, youth exchange programs, including, um, the funding scheme for youth exchange in the mainland and funding scheme for youth internship in the mainland. Mr. Riechan asked about certain figures. We see that the situation has improved this year for the international youth exchange programs. In the past, we have said that a lot of funding went to youth exchange in the mainland. And this year, the funding has increased from six million dollars three years ago to twenty-three million dollars this year. So the it's almost fourfold, which is very good to see. It shows that you have, um, heeded our advice. In terms of the, um, expenditure or the absolute dollar amounts, um, the estimate is still much lower than the FSYM and FSYIM. So I think there's further room for growth. We understand that the costs of international exchange programs would be somewhat higher. But, um, we do want to broaden the horizons of our young people nonetheless. Um, given the current epidemic, if there is any surplus from our allocation this year, would it be, um, called back to the treasury or would it be utilized for the same purpose in the future? When you subsidize irrelevant individuals or organizations, they might have booked the flights and hotels. But at the last minute, they might have to call off their trip. If that's the case, are you still going to provide the subvention or would they have to pay out of their own pockets? I wonder whether you can shed some light on this. For exchange programs to Taiwan or Macau, would they, um, be, would they fall under the international youth exchange programs or the mainland exchange programs? Deputy Secretary, Mr. Patrick Lee, thank you. Thank you for the questions. Mr. Yip was right in that, um, given the current epidemic, the safety and health of our young people are our priority. At the turn of the year, some of the mainland exchange programs, um, were slated for the first month, three months of the year and they were postponed. But, um, we have offered some flexibility. We allowed NGOs to, um, modify their programs. For example, by postponing the, um, programs and we would offer flexibility if the events take place in the next financial year. The same goes for the international exchange programs. At the beginning, these programs were not affected, but due to the development of the epidemic overseas, we have decided to adopt the same approach. And that is the NGOs were allowed to postpone or modify their programs. For parties who have purchased flights already, again, we would offer flexibility. And we would reimburse the fees already incurred. The, um, international youth exchange programs would cover places outside of the mainland. Dr. Lawi Quack. Mr. Yip. What about the issue with Taiwan and Macau? He answered the question. They, um, they would not be classified under the international programs, so they would fall under the mainland programs. Since time is limited, um, please send in written questions if you have other queries. Uh, what would happen with the, the surplus? I think that question was already answered. Dr. Lawi Quack. I'd like to ask about HAB zero three six. And in this question, I asked about youth development work and how we can encourage grassroots youth participation in the, um, commission. That way, they can participate in, um, politics. I, uh, from the news, um, yesterday. In terms of, um, academic, um, career and political involvement. Last night, um, a woman was robbed, um, in Tai Gao Chi. And, um, two thirteen-year-old, um, youths were arrested. So, um, it, it was appalling. So I think, um, we should, um, think about some more fundamental issues. Teenagers, um, have become robbers and they do not understand the grave consequences of such crimes. But, um, this is, um, this is not just about the work of the Home Affairs Bureau. This is a wider problem for the society as a whole.
So I'm really speechless. Let me say to all the public officers here. If we do not really have the concept of abiding by the law in our society and when we see two thirteen-year-olds being arrested for breaking the law, I really would like to have a response from you. Salao, secretary, chairman. I share the sentiment of Mr., uh, of Dr. Law and I subscribe to his views on youth development work. There can be collaboration from different perspectives. The Home Affairs Bureau emphasizes importance on education, career and homeownership as well as participation in politics, policy discussion, debate. This is a fruit of years of development. Despite what Dr. Law mentioned about last night's incident, I don't think we should, um, we should deny all our efforts over the years. However, about the case cited by Dr. Lawi Quack, I think it also has to do with education. And this is not only falling squarely on the shoulders of the government. We also need to rely on the social support. For example, some characters during social incidents have incited young people to engage in certain acts. And this is something the whole society should reflect on and should further discuss. I still have time, chairman. I really have this strong sentiment. From last night's case, I would say that this is not the one-off incident. Over the past year, juveniles have been breaking the law, bringing a lot of social unrest. And if we don't do something about it in time, right, Dr. Law would like to supplement. And that's the end of it. Um, any response from Mr. Lau? No? Next, Dr. Priscilla Lang. I have a question for Mr. Lau. Now, this is really a longstanding problem. In twenty fourteen, after the Occupy movement saga, I already pointed out that there are different platforms in the community, in public places, in housing estates, for example, on the podium. Um, they may show, have a screening of the movie Ten Years. Well, the movie itself is controversial. And, uh, it is about Hong Kong's independence. But at least the movie would come with the warning of parental guidance. I saw hundreds of people gathering there to watch the movie, including a five-year-old, without any kind of management. In fact, I reflected this view, uh, to you because of the complaints I received. Because some of these screenings actually took place in venues managed by your bureau. Some of them even, uh, some of the participants even put up slogans and placards about self-determination and Hong Kong's independence. So I think some organizations advocating these ideas are involved. It seems that you're ignoring the problem. If you rely on frontline offices to make judgment on the matter, it won't work. You should devise some guidelines and set, uh, and lay down a framework. That is, this is the bottom line of one country, two systems principle. When you talk about self-determination and localism and Hong Kong's independence, all these are against the principle of one country, two systems. And we cannot just turn away and allow them to organize activities for the underage. Because some of them are really ignorant and you are just turning away from the problem. We need to focus on education for the public and for the youth, youths. My request is for you to devise guidelines so that at least for venues managed by you, there should be a clear judgment on the matter. There should be QC, so to speak, so to speak, on what should be regulated. Secretary, thank you, Dr. Lang, for her comments. For different government venues, we do receive a variety of applications. The departments will vet these applications according to the applicable guidelines and laws. Well, secretary, I don't think you're answering my question. It's been six years. We're in twenty twenty. Back then, I approached you and I talked to your colleagues. I was passing by a housing estate in Cowan West and I witnessed how the five-year-old and other children were watching that movie. Parental guidance is, uh, parental guidance advised. There was no supervision. You cannot just deregulate these activities. Hong Kong is a special administrative region. We have the bottom line of one country, two systems principle and the basic law. And if you don't provide clear guidelines to civil servants, you cannot just put the blame on government departments now that something's gone wrong. You should devise guidelines for government bureaus and departments. You should be the lead bureau because you're in charge with community education and youth development. So how can you pass the buck to government departments? Secretary, I reiterate that these law enforcement agencies and departments will surely conduct themselves according to the applicable laws and regulations. As to whether we can make improvements in this regard, we're happy to heed the views of Dr. Priscilla Lang. Next, Mr. Eddie Chu. Thank you, chairman. I don't quite understand why Dr. Priscilla Lang would not turn to the laws of Hong Kong. Can you just waive the booklet of the basic law and be the police? Not even the secretary subscribes to your view. So stop being a thought police or go back to the mainland. Are you trying to impose censorship to, um, on libraries and LCSD venues and housing estates? Is there something wrong with you? But my question is this. Uh, Dr. Priscilla Lang, point of order. Mr. Eddie Chu. Ask whether there's something wrong with me, whether I'm sick. On what basis is he making this remark? What is meant by thought police? I think he is distorting my remarks. Yes, I asked him to withdraw these remarks already. Um, yes, uh, Mr. Chu already withdrew his remarks. Please continue. Mr. Long Yung Chong, at the outset, asked the secretary a question about anti-apocalyptic effort, HAB O one eight. About street sleepers. I understand the position of the secretary. Community centers should be closed, LCSD venues should be closed and no shower facilities should be provided in order to fight the epidemic. However, we do have volunteers chipping in to rent guest houses for refugees who are shut away from McDonald's because of, uh, the fast food chain closing at night. So the volunteers are chipping in to help them. So the volunteers are chipping in to help them by renting guest houses. I believe the Social Welfare Department has conducted a survey and they do keep a list. I don't know whether under your bureau or under the Community Care Fund provisions can be made so that, say, within ten days or two weeks, assistance can be provided to help them with accommodation. So that's my suggestion, a response from the secretary, please. Next question, also relating to anti-epidemic effort. The Director of Home Affairs just now referred to the one-thousand-dollar hardship allowance for frontline cleaners and security guards. In fact, I've heard that there is a quota for, for a building. Let's say, six names per building. And if you have substitute workers, you cannot put them on the list. I don't know whether you have these restrictions. So I do think the Home Affairs Department or the bureau should take a more relaxed approach. Even if they're temporary or substitute workers, property management companies should still be able to put their names in the list. And drivers should also be regarded as frontline staff as well. Next question, H A B zero seven two, relating to ethnic minorities. We have several hundred thousand Muslims in Hong Kong, including Indonesian domestic helpers. But in the new territories, we don't even have a single mosque. So does the Policy Bureau have any measures to help them so that they don't need to fork out money from their own pockets to rent premises for worshiping? I'll defer one of the questions to the director. First, I thank Mister Eddie Chu for understanding the point about not allowing gatherings in community halls. It may not be suitable. And for the second point, the social welfare outreach teams are working on it. For the third point, we do have close communication with Muslim groups about mosque. If necessary, we'll provide support. Miss Chair, question two. About the allowance. You're correct. When we discuss with the industry, we believe that for cleaners and security guards, there should be not more than six staff members per building. We have no requirement on whether they are permanent staff or substitute workers. As long as six cleaners or security guards per building should be entitled to the hardship allowance during the epidemic. Next, Mister Alau. I have a question on H A B oh two nine about funding scheme for youth exchange in the mainland. Because of the epidemic, I'm sure many of these exchange programs have been delayed. And my question for the government is whether expenditure will be reduced because of the delay. I don't see a response here. So how many organizations have applied under the exchange scheme? And how many of them have had their activities postponed or canceled? And whether it is possible for them to make use of the funds after this year? Because I believe after, even after the epidemic is over, the economy will still be bad. It is important that they be provided with funding. I'd like to have the statistics. Mister Lee. Deputy Secretary, let me first report that in the end of last year, at the start of the epidemic, exchange within the mainland and internationally were affected. We had eighteen thousand quotas last year for the youth exchange in the mainland. And because of social incidents, these exchange tours were canceled. When I answered Mister Yip Kin Yuen's question, I mentioned that we will be flexible. We allow the organizations to move their plans forward to this financial year. Now, in this financial year, the epidemic is still evolving quite rapidly. We are unsure when these exchange activities can be resumed. Well, we're talking about the first month of this financial year, so we're at an early stage and we'll keep in view the situation. Once the epidemic subsides and when safety permits, we will consider reinitiating these exchange activities. We'll continue to be flexible and allow organizations to either postpone the activities so that the internship and exchange programs can be rolled out later.
Thank you. This is indeed a very good idea. Once the epidemic is over, I believe the exchange programs would be of much benefit to the youth and they would also boost the economy. I'd like to ask about reply number zero two seven and zero three nine about the broadcasting rights of the Olympic Games. The games would be postponed. We asked whether the government would consider acquiring the broadcasting rights of the games. And you said that the broadcasting rights operate based on the commercial market. TV broadcasters would inevitably be affected by the economy. And having gone through the epidemic as well as the social incidents, can the government really acquire the broadcasting rights of the Olympic Games? So that everyone can enjoy the Olympic Games. We have heard such calls and we are keeping tabs on the developments and we still have a year to go. Final question from this session, Doctor Fernando Chan. I saw my name disappear just now, so thank you very much. I'd like to follow up on the issue of street sleepers. Mister Lung Yung Chong asked about the policy on refugees. The secretary said it does not fall under the ambit of the Home Affairs Bureau. I was startled because in the past, whenever we talked about the policy of street sleepers, they were always discussed at the Home Affairs Panel every time the secretary for Home Affairs or his team would address the relevant issues. This is the first time I hear that the Home Affairs Bureau would not take care of the policies on street sleepers or the homelessness. So which government department is responsible for the policies on street sleepers? Myself and a number of members from the Pro Democracy Camp wanted to set up a meeting with the secretary, but he denied the request, citing that he was busy. Recently, lots of so-called Mac refugees have nowhere to go. In the secretary's reply to Mister Eddie Chu, he said that the Social Welfare Department are considering cash allowance. Can the secretary tell us more? The epidemic is serious and there is a lot of urgency. So can you tell us what the S W D is prepared to do? That way, the relevant bodies and churches can prepare to lodge applications and find refuge for these street sleepers. The H A D said home affairs centers could not be opened during inclement weather. And the same goes for the L C S D's facilities or venues. Recently, lots of changing rooms and shower facilities were closed, which meant that the street sleepers had no way to maintain personal hygiene. So I'd like to hear from the secretary. Mister Lau. Indeed, the policy on street sleepers is not within the ambit of a single policy bureau. Many policy bureaus would be involved. In some cases, cross-departmental effort is needed to deal with issues on street sleepers and we would offer support. And other departments from other bureaus would also help. Secretary, so which bureau is responsible for the overall policy? There is no single policy bureau. A number of members sent in a letter. They propose opening up changing rooms at L C S D venues for people to take shower. If we have dozens or hundreds of people gathering at certain spots, we do not agree with this proposal and that is what we have explained in our reply. We should not go against the spirit of the anti-epidemic work. You talked about the social worker teams of the S W D. We would relay your comments. Other departments are working on this and the same goes for us. But we are responsible for different areas. I would refer your question to the S W D secretary. The work has started already. This is the end of the session. The next session will start at three thirty. We will now take a seven-minute break.